And grant us the wisdom and knowledge to provide our best for the citizens of our city. We ask you to provide guidance in our actions to be taken this day and that these actions provide quality recommendations and guidance for the city staff and city elected officials. Keep our public safe, safety, our military and all our city staff and the citizens of our city, our state and our country healthy and safe. Amen.
Mr. Wine, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bauer. Commissioner Creekmore.
Here.
Commissioner Eberwine. Commissioner Edwards.
Here.
Commissioner Goodman. Commissioner Hicks. Vice Chairman Staler.
Here.
And Chairman Singleton.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, sir. Are there any corrections to the January minutes from the meeting we had? They were standard printed. Today, we have one item on our agenda that is not a public hearing. It's a family subdivision plat, FTR 2024-004. Mr. Wine, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. This is a family subdivision plat, FTR 2024-004, submitted by Jessie J. Johnson, applicant on behalf of Yolanda D. Williamson, property owner, requesting a family subdivision pursuant to Section 31514 of the Unified Development Ordinance to approve a family subdivision plat to create one new parcel on property located at 200 North Cherry Grove Road, zoning map three, parcel eight A, star eight B. The affected property is further identified as being located in the Chukatack Voting Borough, zoned RE Rural Estate Zoning District. The city's 2045 comprehensive plan identifies this property as being located within the rural agricultural land use type. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution approving a family subdivision on property located at 200 North Cherry Grove Road, zoning map three, parcel eight A, star A, B, account number 253077700, FTR 2024-004. Staff Planner Matthew Madariaga will present staff's report.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, this is a request to create one new parcel by family subdivision for the applicant's husband. The subject property is located in the RE Rural Estate Zoning District, and the 2045 comprehensive plan further identifies this property as being located in the rural agricultural land use type outside of the growth area. Subject parcel depicted above is owned by Yolanda Williamson and is located off of North Cherry Grove Road. The property is 27.31 acres in size, from which Yolanda Williamson proposes to subdivide a 3.292 acre parcel to her husband, Donald Williamson. Yolanda Williamson has been an owner of the subject property since 2010, thereby meeting the minimum three-year holding period required for a family subdivision to take place. Donald Williamson has not previously received a family transfer's parcel, therefore, this request fulfills those requirements. Important to note that although city GIS maps show the parcel as being partially in Isle of Wight County, this is not the case. Staff has reached out to the city assessor's office, the surveyor, and the Isle of Wight Planning Department to verify that the parcel is wholly in City of Suffolk, and it is taxed wholly in the City of Suffolk. The lot dimensions and building setback lines for the proposed new lots are, new lot, is consistent with the underlying zoning district, and it has adequate area for a separate dwelling and drain field. The new parcel fronts directly on North Cherry Grove Road. The plat also establishes an ingress egress easement through the new parcel for the benefit of the residue tract because the driveway still goes through that new parcel. That said, the residue tract still has its required frontage, so it's still conforming. A deed of gift for the grantees has been prepared in conjunction with this plat, which prohibits the transfer of the property within 10 years of its receipt, and a sworn affidavit was signed acknowledging the purpose of this family transfer is to provide separate places of residence for the grantees and to keep the family estate within the family. A 10-year holding period does apply to the new parcel. Summary, staff finds that this request meets the criteria for a family subdivision, and the proposed parcel meets all zoning requirements as set forth in the Unified Development Ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the applicant's family subdivision request, FTR 2024-004. I'll stand by if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. I noticed that Mr. Johnson is in the audience. Do you have any additional comments, Mrs. Johnson, Attorney Johnson, you'd like to add?
I'm the applicant. Give you my address. I understand that needs to go on there. 3508 Robbs Drive, Suffolk, Virginia. The Williamses would have been here today, but they're both sick, and they've got one of the flus that's going around, so they asked me to appear on their behalf. In reviewing this, do have to comment about the gentleman, Matthew. He was just here. He was very cordial and very helpful in getting this project off the ground for these people. I think it checks all the blocks from a regulatory standpoint, and we simply ask for your approval. I don't know if there's anything else I could add.
Thank you, Attorney Johnson. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion? Any discussion on the motion?
I just wanted to ask for clarification that the survey was done after, like, as part of the application, and that does override the GIS, as I understand, is not always accurate.
So, our GIS is a guide at best. It's based upon available data, but we're really diligent about that particular issue because, at the end of the day, we cannot utilize our regulations for property in which we do not have jurisdiction to regulate. So, the survey was provided in support of the application, and we further confirmed that information with both our real estate assessor, as well as working with Isle of Wight, their planning department, and real estate assessor to confirm that it is, in fact, not within their jurisdiction.
I just wanted to make sure that applicants didn't have any issues down the road. It sounds like it's taken care of.
Any other questions on the motion? Okay. Mr. Wine, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bauer.
Yes.
Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Staler.
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Johnson, you can let the Williams know that all actions have been taken, and it's, congratulations. Afternoon. We have one public hearing. Public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for rebuttal by the proponents. This meeting is videotaped and televised for public viewing. The first item, or the only item on our agenda today, is a conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-00028. 140 West Washington Street, Mr. Wine, would you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. This is conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-00028, 140 West Washington Street, submitted by Tiffany Brown, applicant on behalf of Melvin E. Gresham, property owner, in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish an adult daycare center use on property located at 140 West Washington Street, zoning map 34G18A, parcel 310. The affected area is further identified as being located within the Suffolk Voting Borough, zoned CBD, Central Business District. The 2045 comprehensive plan designates this area as being located within the central growth area, mixed-use core land use type. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2024-028. Once again, Staff Planner Matthew Madariaga will present staff's report.
Conditional use permit request before you today is to establish a day support facility at 140 West Washington Street. The subject property is located within the central growth area, mixed-use core land use type, and the Suffolk Voting Borough. Additionally, the property is part of the HC Historic Conservation Overlay District. The property is located in the CBD, Central Business District, and it is surrounded by various businesses and apartments, also zoned CBD. The applicant's request is to establish an adult daycare use to provide a day support service to underserved portion of the population. Fresh Start Day Support is proposed to provide community engagement and help develop social skills for individuals with disabilities. Proposed activities include volunteer opportunities, employment readiness activities such as discovery of skills and interests, and community and educational outings, including visiting museums, zoos, and local plays. The proposed day support facility was served up to 20 clients, and the suite is proposed to be used as a meeting point, as well as during inclement weather, like what we're probably going to get tomorrow, that would prevent the clients from being able to go out into the community. The UDO calls for a minimum of one parking space per 375 square feet, meaning a total minimum of four spaces for the proposed use, as the suite is 1,038 square feet. As the subject property is zoned CBD, the Director of Planning and Community Development is able to waive parking requirements as there is sufficient street parking, as well as multiple public parking lots in the area. The 1,038-square-foot suite is located within an existing indoor mall at 140 West Washington Street, and clients are proposed to use the entrance in the rear of the building as both an entrance and exit. Hours of operation are proposed as being Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. Staff believes that the proposed adult daycare use is not expected to adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood. The Departments of Public Works, Utilities, Traffic, and the Bureau of Fire have all reviewed this request and have no concerns at this time. Therefore, staff recommends approval of CUP 2024-028, with the conditions stated in the staff report. That concludes my presentation. I'll stand by for any questions you may have.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to come and speak in favor of this request?
Members of Suffolk City Council, my name is Tiffany Brown. I am here to advocate for the implementation of Fresh Start Day Support program, which will provide essential services and opportunities for individuals in our community who need structured support throughout their day. This program is not just an investment in those individuals, it is an investment in the well-being, productivity, and overall strength of our community as a whole. A well-designed day support program can enhance quality of life, support families and caregivers, reduce strain on emergency services, boost local economy, promote inclusion and community engagement. The success of other cities with similar programs has demonstrated the profound benefits they offer by investing in a day support program. We are ensuring that our community remains a place where everyone has the opportunity to thrive. I urge you to support this program as is not just an act of service, is a step toward a stronger, more connected, more vibrant community for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Is anyone else in the audience who would like to make any comments?
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Shannon Wolf, and I live at 125 Robin Lane. I am here today as a citizen and not as a staff member. This is my son Ian, who is an adult with autism and sometimes experiences extreme behaviors. We met Ms. Brown almost two years ago, and she has been instrumental in Ian's life as his caregiver and advocate. She has always prioritized his needs and helped us access services when no one else would. Ian has attended several day support programs, but he has been discharged due to his behaviors. This situation has left him at home while my husband and I work, which has put a strain on his mental health. Most of Ms. Brown's clients also have challenging behaviors and need an opportunity to learn how to participate in the community and socialize with staff's assistance. Without programs like this, parents are left to navigate how to support their adult children with different abilities on their own, which is no easy task. Therefore, I ask that you approve this conditional use permit to assist my family and many others in our cities who are struggling to find suitable place for their adult children while they work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Is there anyone else that could make some comments?
Good afternoon. I wanted to come up and say a few words. My daughter has extreme behaviors. She has bipolar schizophrenia, paranoid schizophrenia, and a lot of other diagnoses. She can get very aggressive. Last year, I didn't know what to do. I was sitting outside, and I was praying, and I said, "Lord, what can I do?" Because no one has been able to help me. She's been with Westin Tire Water Board for years, and everybody just had a hard time being able to control my daughter or know what to do. So, I remember someone that was doing transportation, and she told me that she was starting doing sponsorship and going to try to get a program for how a day support, because my daughter has been kicked out of several day programs, and it's been really hard. She has been with me now six months, with just 24 hours a day, just me and her, and this has, it can get a little roughed. And so, as her caretaker, I need a break and showed that she, and Ms. Brown has really been a lifesaver, because the day I called her, when I was sitting outside, I didn't know what to do. She said, "I'm gonna call you back in five minutes," and she called back in five minutes, and the rest is history, because all I have to do is call her, and she will come, she will talk over the telephone, she will make sure Brittany is good before the phone call in or before she leave our home, and we never had that before. So, she has been a blessing to us. If she has this program, I believe it will be beneficial for myself to give me some time for myself, and some time for my daughter to be away from me, because we clash because of, she's with me 24/7, because she cannot go to another program, because she gets kicked out. But she has a good relationship with Ms. Brown, and I think that is terrific, because she listens to her, and it has made my life so much better. So, if she would be able to have this program, oh, it would mean the world to our family. So, I thank y'all for listening to me.
Thank you, ma'am. We have four minutes left. Is there anyone else who would like to make some comments? If not, is there anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments in opposition? Seeing none and hearing none, I will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Brown, first of all, thank you for putting this program together. And I guess my question's really around, I haven't seen anything like this before, and I know when you have child daycare centers, there's a lot of regulations by the state. I think the Health Department, some others, have to be involved. Can you kind of give us a little background on how, if any, there's regulations that deal with a place like what you're doing, how the compensation is done? Is that like assistance, that some, like, programs that would provide some of the funding for something like this? Could you just give us a down-and-dirty, quick brief on how this works, so we'll have a better idea? But thanks for doing it.
No problem. So, yes, I would be licensed by the Department of Behavioral Health. I'm currently licensed by them for sponsor residential to help individuals with autism and on that spectrum with behaviors and everything. So, I still have to follow by their regulations, being licensed under them in the state of Virginia.
About the funding, is this individually funded by the participants and their families, or is there some assistance offered as well from state or local?
No, I would be funded by the state.
By state, okay. So, there's some state funding?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That was my question.
No problem.
Is there any other question from Ms. Brown's at the podium? Thanks, Ms. Brown. Commissioners?
Chairman, I move for the approval of CUP 2024-028.
We have a second.
I second it.
Any discussion on the motion?
With conditions, I presume. Two conditions.
With conditions.
Two conditions. Thank you.
I would like to say, I didn't know what they were going to do with that building, but I don't think there are any better use that could be used for that building. There's a whole lot of space there, and nothing really ever been really successful there. So, we wish you great success.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Wine, would you call the roll for the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bauer.
Definitely, yes.
Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Staler.
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Congratulations, Ms. Brown. This has been approved by this body, and we'll go to City Council on March 19th with a recommendation for approval. Thanks again for all you do. That closes the public hearings for today. Do we have any old business that I can't think of any?
No, sir.
New business, we have a significant land use item that we need to be apprised of, and I think, Mr. Wine, you're going to do that for us?
Yes, sir. I will try to quickly walk you through this request that is tentatively scheduled for your March 18th meeting at public hearing, but it's been a while. But, as y'all recall, if we have a significant land use item, we have promised to bring it to you all and City Council in advance, at least 30 days in advance of the public hearing scheduled. And this is a significant land use item, as it meets that threshold established through policy, as it's greater than 100 units, 100 residential units. This is for property that is currently part of the Harborview Station Plan Development, mixed-use development. In Harborview, it's immediately adjacent to the interchange there at Bridge Road and Interstate 664. It's flanked on each end by some apartment complexes that were established as part of that same development. But this has quite a history. It was originally rezoned in 2007, and it was modified twice since, once in 2010, and then again in 2013. Essentially, that modification in, I think it was 2013, extracted out the Bon Secours site. That was originally a part of it. But, there is a proffer associated with it currently that limits the development of 200 additional adults, independent living, assisted living units. It's kind of captures a variety of things with that proffer. But, the parcel in question, my understanding, was the one where these assisted living units were going to be placed. But, it was also slated for use as medical, office, retail, commercial, and assisted living. So, there were a variety of uses that could be placed there. This proposal would extract it out of that MUD, and it would rezone it to RU24 to allow for 344 residential units. 288 of those would be multifamily, while there would be 56 single-family attached units that would be developed as townhomes. Latency on the clicker. Either that, or Brittany broke it, which wouldn't surprise me.
Apparently possible.
All right. So, the applicant is bringing some voluntary proffers to the table. Specifically, 155 of these units would be one-bedroom units. This would be in reference to the 288 multifamily. That's significant, because the way our adequate public facilities language is structured as it relates to generation of students, one-bedrooms are essentially exempt from that calculation. So, that drastically reduces their impact on the school system, at least as it relates to our Unified Development Adequate Public Facilities provisions. 189 of the units would have two or more bedrooms, and they are advancing school capacity through a cash contribution to the tune of about $2.9 million. Additionally, and with them extracting this out of an MUD, you all know this, one of the primary considerations with any MUD is basically the creation of your own design criteria and your own zoning as it relates to use types. So, they are proffering substantial conformance with some submitted conceptual layouts that they provided. The conceptual layout is here. You can see that the multifamily units would be closer to the I64 side, and you would have those multifamily, I'm sorry, the single-family attached there on Harbor Town Parkway, right across from some of the existing development within the MUD. And then, we have the elevations that they have proffered as well. Here, you have the multifamily, and we also have some for the townhomes here. So, staff continues to evaluate this application, but as I noted, it is tentatively scheduled for your March 18th meeting, in which we have a public hearing scheduled, and then it will go before council at their meeting in April, on April 16th, for public hearing there. In the meantime, you can get additional information, including all submitted application materials that have been provided to staff in support of the application on our website. We do have a tab on the planning website. On the sidebar, it'll say rezonings, conditional uses, public hearings. There, you can gather all the submitted documents that have been submitted in support of this one.
Any questions from commissioners on what Mr. Wine presented? So, we got homework.
Real quick, make sure I understand. You said it was already
Real quick, make sure I understand. You said there was already two hundred units that was already a part of the original mud?
So there were, originally, when this was approved, there were more than that. I want to say it was twelve hundred units at one point. That was reduced over time. As approved now, there were five hundred multifamily units that were permitted, and then separately, also proffered, there were two hundred assisted living adult independent living units. And that is one of the uses that would be allowable under the existing muddle on this property. So that's a roundabout way of saying yes. As proffered, these weren't cleanly proffered as necessarily multifamily units, but they were proffered as assisted living slash adult independent living units.
So let me try and understand. So it's basically additional hundred and forty-four units on this piece of property?
Yes, yes, except they're no longer, they'll no longer have that assisted living and/or adult independent living connotations. So these would allow for, no longer allow for those two hundred specific units, but from a net gain perspective, if it was like-for-like, yes, you'd be gaining that net.
But to make sure I understand, but those two hundred originally would have had less of an input, I mean, footprint overall in the community, like the assisted living, because like now we're looking at schools and things like that. And to make sure I understand, are all three schools zoned here already to overcapacity?
The three, yeah, the three schools that serve the site include Northern Shores Elementary, Colonel Fred Cherry, and Nansman River High School. I know for certain that Northern Shores and Nansman River are overcapacity. Last time I checked, with committed development, Colonel Fred Cherry is as well. I'll look to Gonzales. You've run the numbers. That's correct.
When was Fred Cherry voted on? At two thousand sixteen?
When was that built?
Yeah, when it was sixteen?
Oh, I think it came online around twenty eighteen?
Twenty eighteen.
I think twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen was its first academic year.
How long it's been over?
And so there's a difference in being overcapacity per the school's programmed capacity and the school, I'm sorry, the city, because we, when we evaluate, we try to incorporate what developments have received some level of approval past the rezoning standpoint. So we consider that committed development. So when we look at committed development for the area, units that are coming online that have received site plan approval or subdivision approval, that puts it at that point overcapacity.
I just have a comment. I live out that way, and we go out to Harborview area frequently, but not in the afternoon or early in the morning. There's a traffic problem right now as it exists, because it's limited ingress and egress to that entire site. And, you know, we are approving a number more of these units. There are a lot of apartments, townhouses, and condos that are located back in there, plus the businesses that are there. And I think we need to really look at that, look forward to hearing, you know, what they're talking about on this, but if we keep adding more and more, I know there's a, through city engineering, they're going to rework that intersection out on seventeen. It's going to be some time before all that happens, but that's a bad accident area as it stands right now, with everything dumping out right there in Harborview. And I think that that's something that we need to think about, because the more and more houses, apartments, and that sort of thing that goes in there, it's difficult for the people to get, that are already there, to get in and out. So I just think that we need to look at that really closely when this comes up next time.
Thank you.
I'm going to put that one to bed and move to the next one. The City Council meeting on January fifteenth, do we have a status report?
Yes, sir, and bear with me, it was a really small agenda. No, there were six items in total that went before City Council. The first was the SYAA, if you recall the rezoning that they did to allow for their indoor facility, that rezoned a portion of the property to B two, that then allowed them to get a conditional use permit to allow for the indoor amusement recreation operation. So for those first two items were both approved by City Council, the conditional use permit with the conditions associated. And then we had the daycare, the at-home daycare, the family day home at one-twenty-seven Berkshire Boulevard. That was approved with conditions, the CUP. Then we had Pearls and Bow Ties, which was also a companion. We had two CUPs there. You recall, we had the parking lot that was required to be established to give them, to meet our minimum parking requirements, even though it's on a separate parcel, for the assembly use. Both of those applications were approved with conditions. And then lastly, we had the solar facility there on Crettonden Road near Chuckettuck that was approved with conditions by City Council. And that concludes our report on that.
I'll leave it there, please. Plas approved, none, and the committee on ordinance, I have to understand you have some motions to bring forward to us?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we do need to add two items on our agenda for next month's meeting. That'd be March the eighteen-twenty-five. One would be text amendment dealing with cluster subdivisions, and also one dealing with the twenty-four-five Comprehensive Plan.
Check it one at a time?
Sure. Make a motion for us to put an agenda item on next month's meeting for cluster subdivisions.
Second motion.
Got a second? Any discussion or motion? You want to do this with a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
And the second item would be a ordinance text amendment dealing with the twenty-four-five Comprehensive Plan for our meeting on three-eighteen-twenty-five.
Got a second motion? Any discussion or motion? You want to do this with a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposition? None. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Comments for commissioners? I have one. I've contacted Ms. Jennifer Moore a while back, and you probably noticed you're getting emails from her for ribbon-cutting ceremonies. The last two, well, I was at one last week, and I was at one, I think, last month, the indoor storage unit and this glow fiber. Past policies in this commission was, anything that we send to council and council approve, and they have a ribbon-cutting ceremonies for that event, we should be there to see it to fruition for the completion. And I just encourage you, when you get those emails from Ms. Moore, you don't have to respond to it, just show up at the ribbon-cutting time. That's all I have.
Well, speaking for myself, since this is the first month in, what, fourteen months that we've had these computers, this is the first time I've been able to get on there sometime during the month that I get those notices from the city, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I just tell everybody, I understand we're going to have some weather over the next coming days, so everybody be careful, drive careful. There's a lot of crazy drivers out there that seem to take advantage of slushy snow conditions, so just be careful like that.
Nothing else? We stand adjourned.
That was completely painful. Your family doing well?
They are.